Okay, we'll call the Tuesday, February twenty fourth, twenty second, two thousand and twenty. Meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
Uh, no chairman.
Uh, roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Helmer?
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Uh, she has an excused absence, I believe, tonight. Uh, public comments under government code five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before, during the commission's considerations. State law prohibits the planning commission on acting on non-agenda items. Do we get anything in writing for this, or?
No, we have not received any comments.
Okay, so we'll move right along. We have one item under information and consent calendar, the approval of the minutes from the January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two meeting. If there's no need for discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chair Jacobs made the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously amongst who are here. Uh, public hearings, we have one item, city initiated zoning code zoning text amendment number ZTA twenty one dash zero two, amending the planning and zoning code related to towing and impound yards, dry cleaning establishments, and various clarification and cleanup language related to various commercial uses and their associated development regulations.
All right, thank you, Chairman. So this was a, uh, back in December, the city council voted to initiate a zoning text amendment to update the city's zoning code regulations related to towing and impound facilities and dry cleaning establishments. Um, this is from being a, the staff was approached by a, an entity that's looking to open a dry cleaning establishment in town, um, as well as we were approached by, uh, a towing facility that's looking to locate here in Kalinga. Um, and typically when we receive those, um, if sta- staff will usually direct those individuals to reach out to council members or to their electeds to kind of initiate that process unless they choose to initiate the process themselves. Um, and so in this case, um, the council directed staff to look at, um, updating, uh, those two regulations and we'll discuss those, you know, we'll discuss those and some of those changes, um, during this, uh, public hearing. And then in addition, typically when we do these zoning amendments, staff kind of, I kind of keep, I guess I say staff, but I say myself because it's kind of me, but, um, I take notes of some of the things that are kind of where I either get little inklings of calls on multiple things or there's just some language that's not really clear that I constantly am asking the city attorney or I'm trying to like get clarification on some type of regulation or the lan- or how that language is interpreted in the, in the code. And to try to sometimes get some clarification, um, I work, I try to jot these down and say, hey, you know, when we get one of these, maybe we'll try to update it. And it's just allowing us to be more business friendly. That's one thing that the city's trying to do. And the more regulations we put on, the more complicated it is. It just kind of discouraged that type of, uh, regulation and it's costly, especially for small businesses that are trying to open. So we look at non-impactful changes to the regulation that really kind of, um, allow us to, uh, you know, allow more opportunity for folks here in town. So, um, there are some additional language, there's some additional, uh, language in the ordinance that just addresses some other, you know, nuances, um, related to, uh, car washes and service stations and how those correlate, uh, general offices and then also, um, some variation in telecommunications uses. Um, because typically like way back in the day, pretty much telecommunications was really, you know, big cell towers and that's it. But not really the other infrastructure, like broadband infrastructure and other ancillary type activities that are included in the kind of the world of telecommunications. So I'll clarify that a little bit. But I'm going to go ahead and go through each one, what the proposed amendments are. And then if you guys have questions, we can, we can go through. And we'll, we'll go, we'll talk at each topic if that works. And then if you have any questions, we'll move on. Um, so towing and impound establishments are defined as establishments primarily engaged in towing light or heavy motor vehicles, both local and long distance. Um, these establishments may provide incidental services such as vehicle storage and emergency road repair services. Uh, this classification does not include automobile dismantling. Um, they fall under salvage yards. So currently towing and impound uses are permitted in the city, but only in the manufacturing business, heavy zoning district. And as you may know, if you, we've looked at the zoning map in a while, the only manufacturing high zone is the garlic plant. So it really discourages this type of use altogether. Um, and in a lot of other jurisdictions, these are typically geared, they're typically okay in your industrial zones, whether it's light or heavy. And you just control it by, on a case-by-case basis through like they say, a use permit. And that's kind of what we, that staff's recommending is that we allow them to move and potentially locate in these MBL zones, the manufacturing business light zones, um, however, subject to a CUP. So we can analyze it, make sure we set the right appropriate conditions to ensure that we don't have, you know, noise issues to adjacent properties or any type of hours of operation, those types of things. Now, we know that they operate pretty much twenty-four seven, but we can at least control the use a little bit more through a use permit rather than just making it permitted by right. So that's, when it comes to towing and impound, that's pretty much the, the amendment that we're proposing is to allow them in the MBL district, subject to a conditional use permit. So what that'll allow us to do is make sure that they're, you know, we can look at the site, you know, how are, if they look at existing locations, how are existing buildings orientated to prevent, you know, noise if they're, if they're bringing a vehicle in late at night, you know, or if they're leaving late at night, how you control those, those impact, those potential impacts. So, um, with that, that's kind of the only really big change on that is just to expand its availability in town. Because right now it's pretty much, we don't really allow them, although we do have a towing and impound yard in the MBL zone now. But it's pretty much operating as like kind of a legal non-conformity. I think it's interstate towing. It's been there for years, um, on West Elm. And those areas are all, you know, and whether, and we've never received major complaints, no issues, you know, with their operations. It's just a matter of they've been operating for years prior to the code change, which was back about sixteen or fourteen, fifteen. Um, and so when we start seeing these and get requests, it makes sense that this might be a good opportunity to kind of, you know, enhance that, uh, availability for those types of uses. So do you have any questions on that change?
Was there any consideration to expanding the, uh, MBH areas as opposed to, I mean, if it's so limited to the garlic factory, would there be any sense in having more, um, heavy?
Um, I think that's a whole different, like, zone amendment because we're not really intensifying uses here. I think because we're controlling it with a use, we tried it like from an environmental standpoint, to try to really limit intensifications of uses and major impacts, the changes in the language that we do, where it's more, trying to make it more consistent. And if, as long as it's kind of consistent with the general plan, we don't run into a lot of problems. I think when we start rezoning property to a higher intense use, it run, you run in, you run, you, you now you grab all those uses we have to consider in environmental review. And what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that actually as part of this budget preparation is I'm going to try and look to see if we can start proceeding forward with a general plan update, because I think we're getting to that point where we need to do that. The general plan has pretty much exhausted its life, but never really come to fruition because it was a very aggressive approach to development and the approach to growth. And I think that I, we have the right tools to be able to come to the council. We're going to have three new council, well, I don't say three, but we're going to at least have one, potentially three on the council, um, because there's three up this year. And so you may, I think it's a good time to start talking about planning and seeing what the city's future growth is going to look like and what the city is going to look like in the future. Our, you know, our general plan doesn't really address cannabis, right? It's more of a commercial slash industrial use, but there's nothing really that supports it and brings it into the, the light where we've done the zoning updates and we've found consistencies with commercial and industrial uses, similar to ag or any other types of uses. However, it doesn't explicitly talk about how we're going to look at cannabis down the road. And, and also how do we look at commercial uses and how are we really kind of orientate existing facilities here in town? Because there's a lot, you know, we have a lot of, we, we see more redevelopment of existing structures and uses inside the city rather than going to a property and demolishing it. So I get a lot of calls, hey, there's an existing metal building, you know, we have the railroad that went right through the town. But you have a lot of old metal buildings, but yet it may be zone mixed use. And it really curtails development because no one's going to build a mix of commercial and residential, or at least primarily commercial, in an old metal building. So it's, it makes it difficult. So I think what we want, we need to look at those priorities to find out how can we incorporate those types of buildings, those types of uses and really accommodate future development in our small community, you know? And so I think that's going to be the big picture. Um, and so hopefully I can get some support from the council. These are very expensive endeavors to go through these updates. But I think if we're going to plan for the future and have a reasonable growth projection, I think that's what we need to look at, so.
Are there any grants that are available for general plan amendments?
I'm, I'm maybe looking into it. Um, general plan amendments, I mean, general plan updates specifically, there haven't been a ton because there's a huge environmental component. The environmental document itself is almost more than the general plan update itself. Um, but I think the city's in a position where I think we can probably try to push this through. It's not something that you have to spend a half million dollars on the first year. It's something that progresses over three and four years. It's a long process. Um, but I think it, it'll help us get to a place where we can actually start having a vision for where this city's going to go in the next fifteen to twenty years.
Do you think you'd like to use your microphones too?
Oh.
We're being recorded.
Sean, do you think the lack of having, uh, uh, heavy manufacturing space available has been a detriment to the city?
I don't think so. Um, I don't get a lot of requests for lo- heavier industrial uses. I think that if we, I, we don't have a lot of big land, we don't have a lot of land for heavier industrial uses, like large manufacturing facilities, you know, we're going to have to annex property or annex to the, to the east in order to really accommodate those types of activities for the heavier, the heavier users. Um, I mean, obviously, you know, cannabis plays a role in the light manufacturing and how people can develop just because the price of those, that land has gone up because they're paying top dollar for that property. Um, it has slowed down a little bit, so I think there is some interest in property is looking to turn over to non-cannabis type users. Um, but in, in this case, I don't, I don't think it has been because I think that if there were a big user that could accommodate, we would be able to try to look at expanding boundaries in order to accommodate those types of activities.
And the general plan currently was from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty-five, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm always, personally, I'm always comfortable with, if we're going to kind of blend in zoning and allow certain designations might, where they might not have been zoned. I'm always comfortable with it as long as we have the discretion of a CUP. As, as long as we have that control of an actual use permit, I feel that that's, that's enough regulatory oversight. That's just my opinion. That's how I've always gone about it.
These things come about, these things come about normally because someone's applying and we're not sure if they, it's a good fit or not.
Yeah, and, and really from, like, from staff's perspective, um, when I look at these, I look at the practicality of it as well. Like, if it's just an off-the-wall kind of request, then it's something I'm saying, you know what, I don't think you're going to get, you're not going to get a lot of support from, you know, elected officials on trying to, or it's just something that I wouldn't be able to support. I think in these cases, we typically try to bring things forward that we think are reasonable, that we can control through a permit, a separate discretionary permit. Um, but there are, I mean, there are obviously some issues where there could be major impacts on certain projects. And so we try to work through those prior to, or they're just projects that may or may not work at all, based on knowing where these zones are and what's a, what, you know, what may be surrounding those areas, how we try to limit those impacts prior to even trying to proceed forward with them. So, you know, sometimes there are requests, sometimes there aren't. And, um, typically if they move forward, you know, the coun- they'll reach out to the council members and then the council will direct staff to, to move forward. Or we, if we feel that it's necessary, we could bring it forward to, I mean, staff could bring it forward as a recommendation, so. So the next one is dry cleaning facilities. Um, this, this particular use is, as you can see, I kind of provided the two different definitions where dry cleaning is mentioned. It, it doesn't really correlate with the definitions to what commercial laundry, dry cleaning plants, dry cleaning agents, excluding large-scale bulk cleaning plants. Now, if you look at all those terms, there's not a lot of consistency in our definitions. And so it makes it very difficult from staff's perspective to really try to say, yeah, well, we can approve this here or approve this elsewhere. So I actually reached out to a couple, uh, manufacturers of the pro- of the actual, um, machines themselves, the actual clean equipment and talking with them because they're kind of the leaders and really kind of helping with the evolution of the, the zoning classifications too. They were able to provide me a little information, so I was able to take that, kind of digest it and kind of see how that would fit within our, within our system. And so what I did is I pretty much took everything dry cleaning related and kind of retooled it so it could break down. We broke it down into kind of three categories, which is one, um, which is the dry cleaning agency, which is for drop-off and pickup on only and no dri- no laundry or dry cleaning equipment on the premise. And then the retail dry cleaner, which is the one that we really had a difficult time was, is where you're not like a big processing plant, but there's no reason why you shouldn't be able to have, but not have, having a processing plant in town, but not allowing for a small drop-off location that can actually process at least some amount of dry cleaning is going to be counterintuitive for the city. It's not going to benefit the city because not, no one's going to come in and put a plant in Kalinga and then all the dry cleaners from forty miles away are not going to drive here, right? So typically in a smaller city, you'll, I mean, a bigger city, you'll have probably a lot of places where you just drop off and then they process elsewhere. But in our situation and other, other mid-sized communities is that we need something like a retail dry cleaner, which basically says a dry cleaning establishment where the dry cleaning and laundry equipment is permitted on the premise and such services are performed on articles brought indirectly from the customers, um, to that establishment. So it's only that if you, you and you brought, drop off those clothes, that's what's being processed at this facility. Um, not everywhere from Avonall to Huron to Hanford and LaMoor are all coming to one place to process a bunch of the sales.
Piggybacking on that, would, with this, with retail dry cleaner, would you allow or could we allow it in a CUP? Because, so I do, I do a lot of dry cleaning with the dry cleaner in LaMoor. I'm there several times a month. Um, I know that he's got a van, that he goes around, he goes around to several tailors picking up. Would you, would that be something, and he all, brings it all back to his little dry cleaning establishment?
So I, I did put in, in the ordinance that retail dry cleaners would be subject to a CUP in all commercial designations.
Perfect.
So what that would allow you to do is ensure, or at least control, how much is being processed out of that facility. And you're going to know through the application process, based on how much equipment they're going to have and what their capabilities of being able to, how much they're going to capability of processing. Um, you're, the goal of this is to put them in a, in a location where it's not a manufacturing plant. It's more of, hey, we're going to have, we're going to have a front desk option, opportunity for you to drop off your clothes and we'll be processing garments locally. And really it's going to, I mean, you may have them where, yeah, they may be processing some of the prisons, the prison guards and state hospital uniforms, you know, those types of opportunities. But it's really about how much is enough. And that was really the challenge, I can admit, you know, through staff trying to look at that and using the term, but including the CUP would allow a little bit of reasonable control in terms of like, how big is this actually going to be? Um, you can look at the size of the building they're going to build and how many clean, how many actual units they're going to have and what the capability of those units are and to ensure that we get that information upfront. So when we do present it to the commission, that we would have that information on what the capabilities of this facility would be based on the amount of equipment. And if that's like, we're like, that's enough, then you basically restrict saying there's no additional equipment that could be added to this facility.
Now, would this, uh, would this U P include things like, and I'm not an expert on dry cleaning, but, um, there are certain processes like for clothes, that that would be a standard that could be processed here, but that certain other things that might require a different process or a different mix of chemicals, say, you know, small, say rugs, for example, that they would not, that, that they may not be allowed to have that kind of equipment for that sort of cleaning, but definitely for clothes and things like that.
Yeah, and let, see, this, I'm not sure if it, it doesn't specify like articles of clothing. Um, it says articles, so it doesn't really say like whether it's, you know, other types of things other than clothes. Um, but there could be, I mean, sometimes people have, you know, whether it's like blankets or maybe other, you know, other items that might get dry cleaned. Um, I think this allows the dry cleaner to provide that information in the application. And then, you know, from there deciding, you know, does this fall under a retail dry cleaner? Or does it fall under a wholesale dry cleaning, which is, um, that has equipment on the pre- premise, but on a much larger scale? This classification is for establishments that process articles of several customers and do not have customer pickup.
Like your Centas, Aramark.
Yeah, they mean, they process their own, but they're, they're not going to have a customer pickup location. So the goal is to have a retail front, but be able to process the equipment. So it's like a large laundromat with drop-off capabilities.
Is there, can Kalinga incentivize a company over coming here rather than setting up in Avonall or Huron? Or I mean, is there anything that we can do to make it easier for a business to come in with them?
Well, I think that this right here, what we're doing is part of the process, um, of just making it easier. And there is interest in a dry cleaner. He, the guy was here at the meeting when the council considered initiating the, uh, use permit, I mean, the, the zone change.
Is he an existing dry cleaner or is just interested in getting in the?
I don't know enough about him yet. I've been, I've had a conversation with him once, but not, I'm not exactly sure what, um, whether he has an existing dry cleaner. I, he may have, and maybe if we check the meeting video from that, from that, uh, meeting, which is December twenty-second, I think, or not twenty-second, December second, um, he may have mentioned that he had dry cleaners in other jurisdictions. I can't, I don't recall though.
Is he possibly interested in also including shoe repair?
I don't know.
I'm serious.
Yeah, I could tell.
Especially when I was working, it was like, this is not good.
So these are kind of the recommended three definitions, um, for dry cleaning facilities. And then with the ordinance, we just basically are amending the zoning code for dry cleaning agencies to be permitted by right. So those, I say, hey, submit your business license, go into an existing building, that's fine. The retail dry cleaner would be, was subject to a CUP. And then the wholesale dry cleaning would be only in the MBL and MBH zoning designations under a use permit as well.
I'm very comfortable with these. I feel that they're very clear and concise. I mean, uh, when we did the zoning code in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, it took an entire year having both meetings every, every time. There was one time where we spent an entire meeting talking nothing about where adult use shops were going to go. So, uh, some, uh, do you remember that?
Yeah.
Uh, that, so, you know, we tried our best, all five of us, but you know, things, things have changed.
Hundred percent. And when you, and it's not very often you go do a comprehensive, like literally delete the old code and rebuild it from scratch, because that's pretty much what we did. Um, I mean, you were dealing with the nineteen sixties ordinance with a completely new general plan that was already like eight years old and developing a zoning code around the existing general plan that may or may not have been exactly what the vision was at the time. But zoning codes have to be consistent with the general plan, so it has to match that. So there are some convoluted things. There are definitions, but when we went through this ordinance, yes, it's a, it was a lot to go through. And, you know, we had a consultant that helped us. Um, but it's still a lot for sta- a single staff member and five commissioners to really digest and really kind of look at the real-life consequences or benefits of every word that was put in this code.
Did, where did we, where did we end up on our project to review all the definitions?
Covid.
And I know we, I, because I, and I thought that was pre-Covid, but then I also remembered you, you're making the comment early on that to convene a meeting and do it via Zoom, and I think the only thing we had on the agenda was the definitions just so we could get comfortable with doing that. And that, but we never finished.
Yes, I, unfortunately, I got hammered on a bunch of projects and it just, it takes a, it took a lot to try to put all, each segment together. And so hopefully I can try to get that going again. Um, I know we were, we, we already had, yeah, we already had a few, we had probably three or four meetings already starting to talk about it. Um, but I, I'd like to do that. And I, this kind of sparked my memory of that as well when I, when we talked about this because those are the opportunities to really make those red line changes and amendments to it. But I really want to have time as, from a staff perspective, to really be able to sit down and analyze each section before bringing it to you. So I can bring you guys some real-life examples in terms of why certain things need to change and why things shouldn't change. Um, but maybe I'll try to look at an easier approach where basically we just do them as individual amendments. And maybe we focus on certain segments of the code and get those approved. So we're not waiting at the last to do all of it at once, where we just like, we focus on a section like signs or we do something else to look at. Um, but yes, that's still in my mind. It's just, yeah, it's one of many. So if you guys are comfortable with that, I can. So if you guys are comfortable with that, I can move on and then we can, we can talk about some of the cleanup language. These are, these are pretty straightforward. And I can tell you, these are from, from conversations I've had with other people and just, you know, things I've had to almost turn down projects that are pretty straightforward, but the code just makes it a little bit challenging. Um, the one about service stations and vehicle washing. So staff, um, we look to update the code to clarify car washes can sit, because they're typically accessory to service stations. When you look at our code right now, we have separate washing facility, vehicle washing facilities and service stations. And the way, but yet you can go under service stations and under additional development regulations, it says vehicle washing facilities. And there's regulations. It's a little bit convoluted in terms of how it says whether a service station should be permitted or not. And it's like certain zone, not a certain zone. And as we know in our zoning code, commercial service, general commercial and mixed use are really spread out in our, in our zoning code. Cause when the general plan was done, there was a lot of, there, I think there was a lot of looking at general plan land uses based on existing uses, rather than looking at what do we want it to look like? And did we need three commercial zones within our core downtown area? Or where we can expand the availability of uses? Because like I was mentioning earlier, you've got a lot of old buildings, you've got a lot of old facilities that may not look like something that someone's going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on demolishing a building, building a new building and putting in. Investment is very difficult in Kalanga in terms of business expansion or even like new business. So with that, I, I see in the future, hopefully looking at, you know, really expanding our use, uses and not being as like divisive of, of our, of our actual uses in, in terms of what's permitted in what zones. Because you could have service commercial and general commercial on both sides. But yet you can't put a similar use in the service commercial zone, but you can put it in the general commercial zone. But yet they're all by each other. They're, you know, in the surrounding area where, and it could be an old office building, right? So it could be an office building that is now zone service commercial and then it doesn't allow offices. Right? And you have got three units that can easily be occupied by businesses. And, and so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So it's kind of balancing that and making it a little bit easier. So with the service stations and vehicle washing facilities was basically applying general commercial and commercial retail and service commercial to allow, um, the car washes as accessory to them. So you have to have the primary service station. So, you know, it, to meet the intent of the code was that it wasn't that they didn't want to allow service stations, they didn't want just standalone car washes in service commercial and general commercial. Whether that's a big deal, yeah. Whether it's a big deal or not. I mean, we've got two on, we've got one on Elm and it's, you know, certain general commercial. But yet it's pretty much, it's, it's very convoluted in terms of the way the language is written, whether or not it, it would, I could say yes or no. So I wanted to clarify it and say, hey, if you have a service station in these zones, as long as you got a car, if a car wash is accessory, a car wash could be permitted. And it would typically, I think, under the, the thing, it's a, it's a CUP. So it still comes in saying, um, that they're all required. Service stations always require conditional use permit anyways. So the language change is just adding that additional bullet at the bottom. Number seven, which says washing facilities shall be permitted ancillary to a service station that is a primary use. And that's only for general commercial. The other ones, they're pretty much permitted. It's just CG, they're limited to a gross floor area, you know, that the auto service stations and car washing of 5,000 square feet. So it just limits that. But this will at least allow now those facilities to locate in the, in the general commercial areas too. Um, so with that, that's just what it is on, there's not really any change in definitions. It's just basically adding that, that additional bullet point there to the regulation. Um, in terms of general office and telecommunication, um, this was kind of brought up that I discovered when we're looking, there's looking to be some companies that are looking to expand broadband in the community and doing major infrastructure upgrades to expand broadband to every household and business in this town at high gig speed. And they need a central office. They need a location where all of the wiring goes to one hub. Larry's probably laughing at me because I'm using all these weird terms that don't make any sense, but I'm a layman when it comes to this stuff. Yeah. But you guys understand it. But basically everything needs to come to the central location. It can't go in an industrial location and then bring all these, all this infrastructure in town. It needs to be somewhere central. And so the way our code was set up is that it really didn't allow any type of office use or, I mean, any type of telecommunications in the mixed use or CS zones. And these are really mostly indoor and it's really geared towards facilities within buildings. It's not necessarily like a new cell tower. It's more else facilities within buildings. And so with the, what the scenario was, is that someone needs a place for their facilities in a building with maybe very minimal outdoor storage covered, you know, non-visible storage and have their customer service office, right? Almost similar to what Kalniva has now. Um, and there are properties in town that people have been looking at. And I think that with the limited availability, allowing this type of opportunity, because you don't want just an unmanned building, you know, made right on downtown. But if there's a, a presence of an office space with public access that at least allows in and out, and it has some presence, and we're going to get some rehabilitated buildings because they're going to, they're going to spend money. So what we're looking at doing is, um, permitting facilities within buildings in the mixed use and service commercial zones, um, for broadband infrastructure in the city with the requirement that a central office is located on the premise as well. And, um, so that would allow for these locations to actually, um, locate. I think one of them is they're actually looking at, um, a property on Elm Avenue where they want to bring in all the infrastructure there. And, um, but they're going to have their customer service option, uh, office available to the public as well. So. Head ins?
Head ins, yeah. I always used to work from the telecommunication.
Has, has the property where Family Dollar was going to go, has that sold?
I, my understanding it has. Yeah. There's new owners. Um, there's been some talk about development, but I'm not exactly sure. Haven't received any applications yet, but there has been some talks. Yeah. So that, that's probably what we're looking at. And then also addition, when we're looking at offices is just expanding, um, regulations to include service commercial to allow, you know, office space and service commercial. And the reason why I say this is that when I look, when I get requests and I look at property around town, that's basically zone CS. We have a lot of areas that are CS that could essentially accommodate office space. Um, and so a lot of times with CS, if you're looking at a true CS zoning designation, you're, you're looking at something that's more of like a, you know, tire shop or, you know, some more type heavier commercial type use, where then an office would be ancillary to that. But in our case, I think the way that our zoning is set up is that I think we can look at these, um, from a perspective where, you know, there's a lot of office space that's been zoned CS. That is really discouraging development because, you know, it's like, well, you know, yeah, it used to be an old office. It'd be like having a doctor's office in a CS zone. And then somebody else wanted to go in and put in a clinic. It's like, you wouldn't be able to do that because it's not permitted appropriately for it. So. And really wanted to clarify it because the language in the code is a little kind of misleading. Because it says it's supposed to be principal to, it has to be ancillary to a primary commercial use. Well, technically an office is a commercial use. So it's not, it's, it really leaves for discretion where we could say, yeah, that's fine. But I like to have things pretty, as clear cut as possible, just so we, you know, when they say, hey, we want an office in this zone. Yeah, offices are permitted. That's fine. So, um, and with that, those are the, those are the three. So nothing too big, but those are things that have been kind of been, I've been kind of jotting down that I wanted to kind of clean up a little bit to get some clarification on. So I've worked with the city attorney and we've kind of, they've reviewed these and so that these would work to kind of, you know, at least clarify some of the, the uses. And so.
Public hearing is now open. Uh, do we get any written comments?
I've received none.
Okay. And seeing there's no members in the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any need for any further discussion? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does it have a second?
Uh, I'll second it.
Vice Chair Jacobs made the second, uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving right along, um, department reports.
I don't have any.
Okay. Uh, so no staff announcements. Will we be having a meeting, do you think, in two weeks?
I will know by Thursday. Um, I do have an application I'm processing for a cannabis facility, um, in the industrial park. Um, however, we're still working out some of the, we're still working out some, uh, details on the project. We're getting close. It's just a matter of dealing with the, the power issue and potential short-term, uh, generator use. And so we're trying to work out the logistics onsite for that. Um, but other than that, we are, we're working through it. So if I'm able to get all the information by Thursday, then I'll get the notices pub, the public hearing notices posted. If not, we'll probably push it back one meeting to get the additional clarifications. I don't like putting out public notifications.
Just have them.
Not knowing that there may be more time than needed to get the staff reports done. So.
Commissioner announcements.
Not an announcement, but a question. Tomorrow's the 23rd, right?
Yes.
Is PG&E going to, um, I guess the answer is no.
I got an email from the city engineer at 4:30 today saying that PG&E is not going to be energizing and it's not PG&E's fault.
Really?
Apparently there's technicalities when you get encroachment permits from Caltrans because it's Caltrans. And so unfortunately, they were unable to, they call it a rider, I guess, because the city is, it's a city project. But they can usually use a rider on the city's encroachment permit to get the, to be able to do the work. And unfortunately, there's been an issue with the Caltrans encroachment permit. So they're pushing hard, but unfortunately we will not see PG&E out there, but they have been doing some work, which is good.
I know. It got my hopes up.
I know.
Uh, do we have a new ETA at all?
No, I just found out today. Uh, so hopefully I'll hear something by tomorrow, by the end of the week. I imagine it's going to be relatively close.
Strike that from the record. I didn't say, strike that from the record, please. Okay. I have no announcements, so meeting adjourned.